Hi, this is Todd.
Hey Matt, how are you?
Hey, I'm okay. How are you?
Yeah, loud and clear. Great.
Matt, good to meet you.
Jason on as well?
Yeah, Jason's on. I just got him set.
Okay. Then we're all here. Hi, Jason.
All right, I'm here.
Hey, Jason.
Hi Sally.
Well, it's the same.
So, is Matt, is Matt coming into this?
Matt's on, yeah. He just called in though.
Okay.
Jason, thank you so much for helping that, uh, citizen over in the T section. I appreciate that. She called. Well, she said she dumped you. She understand and stuff, but she said you were very gracious about it.
Awesome. And I called Rod and he jumped on it and got it done the next day, so which is awesome.
Sally, your, uh, video is stuck. Your lips aren't moving, but I hear your voice. Nah, there you go. All right, guys. One minute, we're gonna start. This is, uh...
Oh.
Is Todd gonna join us or not?
Hey, you got the police chief here too.
There's Todd. All right, if all the trustees would, uh, put their mics on, uh, talk. There you go. All right. I have six o'clock. We'll, uh, call the meeting to order. Uh, we'll take a roll call, please.
Trustee Chadwick?
Here.
And President Birmingham?
Here. All right, guys. Thanks for all joining us on this, uh, way to do this, uh, Zoom. So I hope everybody had a good time on getting on. So with that, um, we're going to, uh... Somebody say something?
Yeah, can I, this is, uh, um, this is a matter of etiquette. If everybody could turn off their, their, uh, mics? And then you only turn them on when you're talking.
All right, I, uh, all right, everybody turned off. How do you know you're talking to someone? All right. With that, I'm gonna go to, uh, item number three, uh, which is new business. Number A, BOT 2026. Discussing a necessary action to approve resolution R 2020 dash oh four. Ratifying the emergency proclamation provided by the village president pertaining to COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, does everybody got a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm gonna ask is that we, uh, take a vote uh, on this replacing the one that I signed and, um, if there's any questions, uh, Sarah, what's the only difference on this? Sarah? No. I lost her.
Sarah, are we phoning a friend or are you lost?
I'm hearing the YouTube version and this. I'm just on with Ryan, how to mute the YouTube, so I'm not hearing that while I'm here in the meeting.
Okay. I got it.
Okay, so, uh...
So you have the latest version. You should've gotten it this afternoon.
Yep, we all got it.
Okay.
All right, I'll take, uh, I don't think I need to read it, but I will take a motion to, uh, to, uh, approve this and, uh, in a second.
Motion to approve to the board BOT 2026. Necessary action to approve resolution R 2020 dash four. Ratifying the emergency proclamation approved by the village president pertaining to COVID-19 pandemic that we received today.
I'll second the motion.
I had a, uh, discussion, uh, basically this, uh, just allows us to, uh, do business as usual on an emergency. So with that, I would just take, um... Yes, Carl?
Um, can we put a end date on this? Right now, it's just hanging out there till it's rescinded. Could we say something this'll...
It says at the end, Carl, that the, uh, until the board reconvenes and re-assends this, uh, proclamation, so...
Could we add, uh,
I don't wanna put it...
Six months, three months, uh, or till the board rescinds it, whichever comes first?
I'm, I'm for, um, for me, I'm for leaving it the way it is. I don't wanna put an end date on and then find out. We don't need to put an end date. We just needed to say the board convenes and rescends the proclamation. That's the way it's gonna be. Anybody else have a comment on that? Uh, I, I don't hear anybody. Anybody else want to, um, put a date on the end of this? I don't, I don't hear anybody, Carl, so... Uh, I would prefer not to end it. Uh, what do you think, Todd? Todd?
Coming, I'm coming. Um, I would, I would recommend against putting in a date just 'cause we don't know. No, you know, nobody at this point would just be having to reconvene again. It's tough to have these meetings this way.
Carl, does anybody believe this is gonna lo- go longer than, uh, six months?
No, but what, what is your reason for wanting an end date on this?
I just don't like it open-ended like this. And let's say one year.
Well, I don't, I don't wanna... I'm not for, anyone else for end date on this?
What we would be doing, I just wanna be clear. Whenever the pandemic is ruled handled, we would then convene in one of our meetings and just rescind this.
That's what it says on the last line as well.
Right, so... Yeah, I'm okay with that.
So with that, um, I don't see Carl, anyone else, uh, for doing that. So we will take, uh, uh, the vote on the table, which is to, uh, confirm this resolution. Uh, with that, I would just ask, uh, everybody, uh, show hands? Or just say aye?
Aye.
That's true.
All against?
Aye.
I, I vote no.
Okay. All right, with that, we have, uh, everyone aye except, uh, Carl. No. All right, moving right along?
Yeah. This is Todd.
Uh, standing committee, finance committee. Did you have something, Todd?
Yeah, um, I think we should keep it the way we've been doing it and, uh, vote-wise, Melanie's all prepared. She can call.
All right, cool. I didn't know she's prepared. And let's go around. Melanie, go ahead.
Okay, trustee Barbian?
Aye.
Trustee Olet?
Aye.
Trustee Siborowski?
Aye.
Trustee Sell?
Matt, you on? He must be losing it, so go ahead.
Trustee Gens?
Yeah, aye. Sorry about that. I got muted.
Trustee Gens?
Uh, no.
Trustee Chadwick?
Aye.
And President Birmingham?
Hi, thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to item number four, standing committee report. Finance committee, trustee Barbian.
Thank you, President Birmingham. The only item finance committee has to bring forward tonight is consider warning the bid for the Grange Avenue Bio-Swale Rehabilitation Project FC 2009. Some, some background on, uh, on this. We've been working on this for about a year or so. It's the Bio-Swale on Grange Avenue that, uh, used to have many plants and drainage into the ground for groundwater. It fell into, uh, unable to handle, uh, all the weeds and that that got in there several years ago. And so it was just cut down. Uh, we've received some grants for it and we wanna start it up again with less plants. Um, the filtration system has always been working and then we've worked on this now for through the Public Works Committee for probably about nine months. And, uh, so the finance committee is recommending approval for the proposal of a low bidder and recommend the village board award a contract to Blaze Landscaping Contract Incorporated in the amount of $205,011 for the Bio-Swale on Grange Avenue.
I'll second the motion.
And...
Question? Now Sally?
Uh, just a point of, uh, interest for everybody. Blaze is the one that did the, um, memorial, um, veterans memorial, uh, laid it, laid it out in the landscape.
Any other questions? Regardless of this, we've talked about it before.
Jason has a question. Jason?
Hey, um, this is paid by MSD, right? For this work?
Yes.
What was your question?
Go ahead, Jason.
I, I was just asking if I, MSD is paying for this work?
Yes, we have grants for it.
Yeah, we have one.
I thought so. I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify.
Not the maintenance, right? But the maintenance we're covering, correct?
The agreement's actually attached to the, um, to the, um, memo. The agreement was on...
Carl, you have a question? Move, take your off of mute, mute.
Carl? I saw your hand go up.
Carl, you're on mute.
Carl? Do you have a question, Carl?
Yes.
Oh, there he goes.
Um, the grant money, is it, is it a hundred percent? Does it cover all the, the bid?
As far as I rec- I recollect, it covers all the planting, uh, and since the maintenance of it is gonna fall on us, we're gonna be using summer help, uh, that we normally hire and one will be assigned or is needed to, to maintain and, uh,
Everything's covered, I understand, right?
Carl, it says up to $235,984.
Yeah. $235,000.
We'll be responsible, I believe, for, um, will, will the remainder of that money be able to use for upkeep and maintenance, Todd, or is... Cause if it's 205, 011 and we could, do we get up to 235? So could that help with the budget for GPW?
No. That's not my understanding. It's just for the construction.
So then we'll leave the money on the table?
Sally, go ahead.
Sally, I saw your hand up.
Your line is muted, Sally.
Um, from what I understand, I asked the same question about maintenance in there because of the situation we had in the past. And according to the director, he said that they have made a, a very pointed effort to make it low maintenance. Is it maintenance-free? No. No garden, nothing is ever maintenance-free. So that is a part, they have low maintenance and they are feel that it was, uh, very workable and very doable.
That is correct. And this will start this spring for those of you who aren't aware of it. Since I see another people with questions, I'm going to ask for a, a roll call on this.
We have, uh... Oh, never mind, go ahead.
Trustee Olet?
Aye.
Trustee Siborowski? Trustee Sell?
Aye.
Trustee Gens?
Aye.
Trustee Chadwick?
Aye.
President Birmingham?
Aye.
Trustee Barbian?
Aye.
That concludes all of us on the finance committee for tonight.
Thank you, trustee Barbian. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to new business, item number five. Uh, BOT 2027. Discussion and necessary action to adopt resolution R 2020 dash oh five. Providing an employee policy in response to family first correg- anyways, uh, response act. Todd, are you, uh, talking on this or Sarah? Sarah?
Sure. Um, basically, most of it is in line with the federal law that was passed. So the federal law, um, is we're, um, responsible for doing. We just needed to define whether or not we were going to exempt emergency responders, which we are recommending doing just because if a bunch of them would take off because they're, they have no childcare, we would be without, um, a lot of staff. So we are exempting them. Um, the one thing we did add was section C, which is there are some concern from the staff, like the firefighter, paramedics, that they're going into these homes with these people who may have this disease. And, um, whether they will be covered under workers' cop for this. And there's some, you know, discrepancy of depending if they can prove it was, uh, worker, worker-related, um, way that they caught it. So we did provide some additional coverage for them. Basically, if there's some way to prove that it was they were in contact with someone who's positive, that they would be covered on administratively while they're quarantined. So basically, they wouldn't have to use their own sick time. We did talk about adding an, an additional line, just saying, cause not everyone's getting tested. Just saying if the health department would waive that if, if they feel this is probably a positive case, it just hasn't been tested. We are recommending that be added into that sentence, just saying positive tests must be verified unless waived by the health officer, cause they're kind of on, in the loop with all that stuff of whether or not somebody may be positive and is likely positive even if they weren't tested. And most of the, the, the first coverage part is covered under the federal government. They're paying us back through a okay? Per, 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 through a credit on our income taxes or the taxes that we pay. Those first two items is just items C.
So I'm understanding, Sarah, you broke up a little bit that, um, this is covered, the federal government reimburses us?
Yeah, through a credit on the taxes that we pay in for, um, income taxes into, for our staff.
Um, any questions? Uh, we'll take that first on this issue. Now, I'll take a, uh, motion for approval.
Motion to approve BOT 2027. Action to adopt resolution R 2020 oh five approving an employee policy in response to families first coronavirus. Response Act, adding in the sentence, uh, from the health department that, uh, Sarah had mentioned.
Second the motion?
Question? Yes, uh, chief, please. Chief, can't turn you on.
I was wondering if I could just speak on this just for a second. Uh, right now, with this virus and everything, we certainly are at different times for the fire and police department. We certainly are the people that are the boots on the ground. Uh, we're not able to work at home. I just wanted to quickly explain the Milwaukee County COVID response, what's going on in the county. Currently, there is four dedicated firehouses throughout the col- county that just have COVID response units. One is in Wauwatosa. Two are in Milwaukee, where it's 13th and Brown. The other one's on 84th and Morgan. And one is in Franklin. Uh, currently Greendale is participating in this. That I have one of my members every fourth day is taking a 24-hour shift at the Franklin House. It's either regular relief if we have six members or they are working on overtime. And that overtime is being tracked and we should get reimbursed by the government. Uh, every city and village have people who have this virus. Doctors believe many more have it who are not even being tested. So exactly what does this mean for us? We're doing everything we can to protect ourselves here in the firehouse. We have all the proper PPE, which is protective personal equipment. We have the firehouse currently on lockdown, so other outside individuals or companies can't come into the firehouse. I also decided, uh, against having my members able to work a second job. Some of my members work at a different firehouse. So I thought it was best that we canceled outside employment. Therefore, if one of my members certainly does get sick, we can pinpoint it back to working here. In Greendale, we certainly have long-term care facilities that are at higher risk and also puts my members at higher risk. By no means are we suggesting we're not gonna do our jobs. However, I'm asking for some added protection for my members. Some other communities has offered to include all of the first responders in the family first act, such as Caledonia, New Berlin, Kewana, Green Bay, and others. Um, Milwaukee currently is giving all of their members 40 hours of illness pay that if they're not feeling good, they can use it from that bank, so they don't come to work and infect anybody else. Currently here, we're documenting all our calls and adding the COVID questions. Also, COVID questions are asked through our dispatch and we can kinda get an idea if they're positive or negative before we go on the call. Um, letter C coverage for emergency responders is a great start for morale and a peace of mind. More information's coming out. Uh, there's a lot of times people are only being tested if they actually are put in the hospital. So I really, uh, encourage us that if one of my members gets sick and we've taken all of the precautions that we should have added protection. That's what I would like to add, please.
Thank you, uh, chief. Uh, we'll add that in uh, with this, so, um, that'll be added on to, uh, what we are, um, uh, doing here, so... Any other questions? Yes, trustee Chadwick?
Chief, um, is it a good idea not to, um, not to be have them tested if they feel sick? I mean, I, I think that's important, um, to be tested.
Right now, the only people that are being tested is if the people that are transported to the hospital that are getting admitted into the hospital. Otherwise, right now, there's no other way my members can get tested. And there's so many people out there right now that probably have this, uh, virus that aren't even having symptoms. And some of the testing, um, are false positives that are going on right now. We got some literature here. And I'd be more than happy to share that from the doctors, that, I mean, today I can per, uh, test negative and tomorrow I can test positive. So what we're doing here is just looking for some protection that if my members get sick during the quarantine time, that, uh, we're gonna be protected.
Okay, so you, so right now, there is not, not, there's no foolproof test for this, uh, for the virus. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. There's no test on the street currently and there's nothing for first responders unless, of course, we get so sick that we get admitted to the hospital.
Yeah, unfortunately, Sally, um, exactly that. They don't get, um, you know, they don't get tested. It's those holes, but hopefully that will come together very quickly. I don't know how quickly Milwaukee lends into that path or the Wisconsin area, so...
Some of the basic symptoms for the COVID virus are shortness of breath, fever, and either chest pain or just not feeling right. And that could be anybody.
Further questions on this? Yes, uh, trustee, uh, Carl, yes, please.
Is this, is this only for, uh, our, our first responders, fire departments and, uh, police? Or is this for, covers all village employees?
The policy covers all employees. We just specifically had to decide whether we were exempting the emergency responders.
Why would we, why would we exempt them?
The concern is because that gives them a right to take off, like FMLA for, let's say their child is not in school and they have no childcare and they could be off for extended period of time. Well, if you have, you know, six firefighters who take advantage of that, now we have no staff, so um, that's why we added that piece at the end if they were exposed. And there's that kind of exposure that we would cover their administratively, but not just any kind of leave for like childcare.
And for all other employees, um, if they take off, uh, this, this gives them additional sick leave hours. Uh, when they come back to work, do they need some kind of doctors? Doctors, uh, statement that they did indeed have the COVID-19 or or, or I didn't see a provision for that.
Sarah?
I think we're talking about two different issues is one's the coverage for emergency responders and the other one being the, the new expanded FMLA.
I don't know. Yeah. My, my question isn't with the, for the emergency responders. I just, if this is blanket that covers everybody, I just don't know if there's, I didn't see any provision where if somebody comes back, they, they need to, uh, give documentation that they had the COVID-19 or...
This is law, correct?
Is this...
You're not on.
Ah, chief?
Sarah, you're not on.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, basically those first, the section A and B is federal law, so we have to implement it as it's written. It was just the emergency responders that we had to, to say whether or not we were exempting.
Section A and B is federal law?
Yes, for all the employees.
Okay. Well, I, I can't access that anymore because I, I'm looking at the our meeting, so I can't really access that.
Jim?
Uh, go ahead, uh, Donald, go ahead.
I'm not clear what the chief is asking for.
He's asking for that section C we added, cause that was something that's not required. So he's just advocating for section C.
Oh, okay. Section C for the responders, correct?
Okay.
And I agree with that, that they should be added to that.
So it's just a C is written, not anything else? Right?
Yes. That correct us? Sarah?
Yeah, well, we did add, which Ron put in his motion, the part about having the health officer waive it if that person wasn't tested, but they think they were positive. So just with that line, but he did that, put that in the motion.
Yeah, that'll, that allows for the, is, if the health officer, the Greendale health officer feels that, that they, they were exposed or, uh, believes they, they were um, and can't get a positive test, so say yes, this, this person can take leave.
Yeah.
Further questions on this?
No, what?
No, I need to reread, uh...
Yeah, just to be clear. So everything is federal law. There's nothing we can really say about it. It's the, it's the addition that the fire chief would like us to add, that we're really voting on.
That is correct. He's adding that last part, so...
It's number C and I, I'm recommending it. I believe Sarah's recommending it. The chief's recommending it. A lot of communities are doing something similar because their firefighters had the same concerns.
You're good with that, Carl?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. Like I said, I had no, had no, no concern with the first responders. I just wondered how it was, how it was gonna work out for everybody else.
So everybody's good with that? Any other questions on this? Um, Sarah, do we need to take a vote on this night, this item C or...
Uh, yeah, and you have a motion in a second already.
I'll take, okay, we'll, uh, take a roll call for approval, please.
Trustee Siborowski? Trustee Sell?
Aye.
Trustee Gens?
Aye.
Trustee Chadwick?
Aye.
President Birmingham?
Aye.
Trustee Barbar- Barbian? Trustee Barbarian?
Permanence.
Trustee Olet?
Aye. Very good. Moving on to item number D. Uh, FOT 2028, discuss the necessary action determining the village's essential function during the governor's safe-at-home order. Uh, do you want to explain this, Sarah, or Todd?
Hold on a second. Did, did, we didn't finish C. Which is, um, discussion.
Didn't do the C?
Yeah.
All right.
We have something prepared.
Uh, UOT 2027, discuss, uh, regarding the village's response to the, uh, COVID-19 outbreak. So, uh, who is discussing this? Who is presenting this?
Since the chief already presented some, why don't you go ahead, and then if, um, Chief Kice has something more, and Chief Rosenau can go after.
Okay, this is, uh, Sue Shepherd. Um, so I'm just going to give you a little summary of the situation report, and this may answer some of the questions that you already asked. And just first of all, the symptoms, um, as Chief Kai said, are fever, cough, or shortness of breath. But we are also seeing that early on, people also have nausea, vomiting, and diarrhea. So it doesn't always follow, um, respiratory to start with. The incubation period is two to 14 days, so it's, um, up to, um, quite a, a long time for, for 14 days. As of today, at 1 o'clock, there are 1,351 confirmed cases. It went up 131 days. Total deaths is 16, so that went up two. Milwaukee County has 673 confirmed cases, and of those, 531 are in the city of Milwaukee. And Milwaukee County has 10 total deaths, and numbers are rising. So Greendale has two confirmed cases and many probable and suspect cases. We have two residents that are hospitalized in the ICU. One of them is on a, uh, they are both in the ICU, and one is on a ventilator and not expected to, um, to make it. So, yeah, so for every confirmed case, there's an estimate that there are 10 other cases that are not confirmed, because they are asymptomatic, as Chief Kai said, or don't meet testing criteria. So this virus does have the ability to transmit far easier than flu. It is probably three times as infectious as influenza. One important piece of information that is significant is that, um, many individuals that are infected actually remain without any symptoms. And they are saying up to 25 acts. So you got 25% of the people, they have coronavirus, they are spreading it, but they don't know that they have it. So that's why we keep talking about social distancing. And then those people who do eventually develop symptoms, if they're exposed, they shed viruses from the nose and mouth up to two days before they show, show symptoms. So you could be around people that you, that they don't know they're coming down with it. You don't know they're coming down with it, but they are contagious. So this really explains why this virus is spreading so, uh, rapidly across the country. Because we have those asymptomatic people that are transmitting, and then we have those people who are at 48 hours before they know they have it. So that's why this physical distancing we keep talking about is, is so important. So we, at the Health Department, opened our Emergency Operations Center a month ago, and by doing that, we prioritize our workload. So all we're doing pretty much is COVID response, other communicable diseases, and human health hazards. For the past two weeks, we've been working seven days a week, and we're staggering shifts to cover after-hours and, and weekend time. All the staff are now working full-time or more to cover the work. And then based on this, I, I'm thinking I'm, I'm going to need to, um, probably ask to hire back some of the retired public health nurses to help us out, because it just keeps, the cases are just rising. Other communities in Milwaukee County are already doing this, doing this, where they're hiring, um, public health nurses who have background doing this kind of case investigation. So we are currently following up with the people who are confirmed cases. Some people were exposed at their work site. So, um, we're following those people and monitoring them, or, uh, they were close family contacts of people that tested positive. So when you're a confirmed case, we have to isolate them at home for seven days, plus 72 hours without symptoms of a fever, cough, or breath. Close contacts to confirmed cases, whether at home or work, are quarantined for 14 days and, um, monitoring their symptoms. What we're doing is, um, ensuring that these individuals are staying home, doing monitoring of their temperatures and symptoms, and reporting back to us. So we are, we have to check in with each confirmed case every day for 10 days. Um, any people that are in quarantine who develop symptoms are, are considered a probable case, and they are not tested, but assumed to be a probable case because of their close contact to a confirmed. So we're working real closely with our most vulnerable populations, such as our residents in long-term care facilities and community-based residential facilities. Um, we do daily calls to them to make sure they're, they have enough, uh, personal protective equipment. We're also providing some assistance to other local health departments like West Dallas and Milwaukee, because we do have mutual aid agreements with them, just like our fire does, and our police do with their, um, counterparts in Milwaukee County. Um, so a few other dear that, uh, Chief Kai mentioned too, and, and there were some questions about, and that is around testing. So there are three issues with testing. First one is there's not enough of this personal protective equipment. Every time a person is having a test done, the person who is doing, taking the sample has to wear goggles and face mask, and, um, N95 mask and a gown. So there's shortage of that. There's a shortage of sampling supplies, so it's, um, viral testing media and the swabs that go down the back of the throat. There's also a shortage of lab reagents. So when you combine those three, it causes a shortage of, of testing. So with that, health care provider will to test as many people as they'd like, so they created this tiers of testing. So in, just like Kent said, it's the people that are in the hospital, and then the ICUs that are getting tested. So, um, there's also just overall shortages of this personal protective equipment, just even for our healthcare workers. And I'm not public health. I'm talking about the clinics and hospitals and other first responders, including for our law enforcement. We, the Health Department, we distributed almost 100% of our own supplies to other departments in Greendale to just try to shore up their supplies, um, until we can find other sources. Um, we're also seeing Milwaukee County Emergency Operations Center is trying to increase hospital capacity by looking for ways to increase some locations for, um, hospital beds, and uh, the Army Corps of Engineers is working with, uh, the state, and they're looking at, like, the Wisconsin Center, the State Fair Park, as places to set up hospital beds. And there's also some, um, isolation and quarantine facilities being set up right now. Uh, you probably saw in the paper, or on the news, Claire Hall, which is an old convent in St. Francis, that opened yesterday, and that is for people who need to be isolated or quarantined, and, and either they can't be, um, isolated at home for many reasons. So this is why the safe-at-home order is really important. And I, I get that this is really a, a difficult si- uh, situation. And I see that many people have taken it to heart and really practicing, but there are still a lot of people on the sidelines, and I really want to tell people, uh, now's the time to really embrace this. We, this is not just a little recommendation on a piece of paper. This is really serious, and this is a very important weapon that we have. This virus cannot go from person to person that easily. It needs to be, it needs us to be close. It needs us to be within six feet. If we just distance ourself, this might sustain itself, and it's going to burn out. If you can't do this for yourself, think of all your friends or relatives that are vulnerable because of their age or pre-existing conditions, like your friend who's a diabetic, or your grandchild with asthma, or somebody on chemo. Um, we may not be in the same situation as Milwaukee, but we're getting there. And we are just anticipating an ongoing increase in cases, hospitalizations, and death. And I think we can all just work together by following the safe-at-home order. And I'm, I'd be glad to answer questions maybe after, uh, Chief Rosenau, Chief Kai, or um, Elections Clerk have their chance to our updates.
I don't like to take it off of mute. Anyways, uh, thank you, Sue. Uh, any, either of the chiefs like to add to this at all?
Like, I'd like to add, you certainly saw it very clearly spelled out from Sue, from our Health Department. She's doing a fantastic job keeping us in the loop, giving us information, but you can see how serious it is. And again, the fire and policemen are out there on the streets, so I'm hoping we get that protection.
Thank you, Chief. All right, with that, um, any questions? Trustee Chadwick, take off, yourself off of mute.
Jim, my question.
Trustee Chadwick, there you go.
Okay, um, question, um, for Sue. Um, we all know this is going to get worse before it gets better. Do you think we should move ahead on trying to find, um, that extra help for you and start moving on that now? Rather than wait until, um, another week or so, or whenever you thought you were going to?
No, I would, I intend to ask, um, send a, a request to Todd and Sarah tomorrow, uh, to proceed with this. And at least have, uh, a couple people waiting in the wings and ready to go. These are two nurses that, they're not our nurses that recently retired, but recently retired from West Dallas. Both of them less than a year ago. So they're, they've been separated enough hours and, but just recently retired and very experienced, uh, public health nurses. So I will ask that, go further and, and ask for, um, extra help.
You mentioned that you, we were helping West Dallas. Are we also helping, uh, Hills Corners by any chance?
Uh, Hills Corners, um, we, we have been, we've been in conversation quite a bit. They're just so small that that they are, are calling just for ad- advice and direction, but, um, we would certainly help Hills Corners if they asked us. Um, the reason we're doing West Dallas and Milwaukee is they have such high caseloads, as does the North Shore. And the North Shore are just seeing so many deaths, and there are deaths that we haven't even, that haven't been reported yet, that we, we know about, but we're waiting for them to get reported.
Any other questions to Sue? Yes, Jason?
Um, I'm totally for everything she's doing. What are we going to, like, I guess the funding for this, where are we going to get the money to pay for this?
Um, there's, should be funds coming from the CDC and from FEMA to help cover um, police, uh, public health um, in the future.
Okay, awesome. Like I said, I'm 100% for it. I just, um, just curious where the money's going to come, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, Trustee Barbian?
I also, uh, echo Jason's comments, so 100% for it. I thought this was the proper point to, to just express my thanks and gratitude for the Police, Fire, Health Department, DPW, and voter people who've been working through this whole thing, and I'm going to work every day and doing all what, what we know they are, and, uh, without them, the village wouldn't be functioning, and it, it's my gratitude to them.
Thank you, Trustee Barbian. Anyone else, um, comment on this item? All right, uh, if none, we are taking a vote on this, is that correct?
I would just like to say too, obviously, I would appreciate all the work that everyone's done, and Sarah too, for stepping up. Thank you.
Yeah, Jim, there's no vote on this. This is just discussion.
What'd you say?
This was just discussion.
Didn't you say that Melanie was going to say something about the voting, Todd?
I can if she's prepared.
Melanie, do you want to say a little bit on, uh, voting?
Sure, um, I can give you an update on where we are. Um, currently, we are up to 3,700 absentee, um, ballots issued, um, which is about 400 more than we issued, um, for the presidential in 2016. Um, we've done 600 of, 634 of them in person, so those are people coming into Village Hall and voting. Um, we are doing our best here to keep, um, things clean while peo- while the voters come in, having them do the six feet. We have, um, um, axes marked on the floor. Um, our person that is issuing the ballots has gloves. Um, we have hand sanitizer and everything, but, um, obviously, we are running low on cleaning supplies. Um, the Health Department has been doing their best to get us the stuff that we need, um, but there is a shortage everywhere, so, um, there's that. Uh, I am looking into condensing our polling locations down to three. Um, with regards to lack of poll workers, I have, I had 54 of them scheduled. Um, I have 11 that have confirmed, um, now. I mean, they're dropping left and right daily. Um, I'm getting phone calls telling me that they can't work, emails that's telling me that they can't work. Um, some of the departments have offered their employees to us to help work the polls, so I will be able to have some coverage. Um, but I feel like this is the best way to, um, maintain cleanliness, you know, with cleaning supplies, being able to control the locations the best, and having enough workers to, um, hold an election the way that it needs to be done, so.
Melanie, do you, um, uh, will you have it out early next week, the three places that you're thinking of, or how would you get that out?
So, um, I, we, I will be doing a press release, Facebook, um, on our website. We, um, have that, those signs right outside the entrance. Um, we, we're looking into doing a mailing. Um, there will be, uh, signs at the old polling locations, directing them to the new polling locations. Um, the school district does a notice to their, like, parents, like, a weekly thing, so I'm going to get her the information. Um, just trying to get it out as the best way that we possibly can right now.
Very good, uh, trustee Olet first and then uh.
Okay, what places are you thinking of going to? And I mean, I think this should be done like tomorrow, you know, it's already a week away, you know, and a lot of older people aren't on Facebook, um, and things like that.
Yes, so what I'm looking at doing is having wards one and two and nine and ten vote at the safety center. Um, I'm going to leave Canterbury alone since that has a high um turnover voters there. There's um, I guess a lot of apartments and stuff like that, so a lot of new registrations that vote there. And then I would combine five and six and seven and eight at Highland View. Um, currently College Park is under construction and that is a mess. We had to go to a different room in that building anyways, so I wanted to eliminate that. And the high school with it being under construction and the way that set up to combine two or having two reporting units there, there's no good flow that would work. So that's why I chose those three locations. Um, I do. The host tower I plan on using for the central count. Um, we, with the huge influx, obviously, you know, I'll probably easily hit four-thousand absentee ballots um by Thursday, that we need room to have people spread out and process these ballots. Which the boardroom is not big enough for that.
Absentee ballots are still available? I get a lot of questions on that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, so they can request an absentee be sent by, to them by mail till Thursday at five P M. We will have in-person voting until four P M on Friday.
Okay, good. People have been calling, yes, uh, Jason, please.
And I'm just asking a question, and I know they said, mentioned three places. With how many absentee and how many people have came here, what about just doing one location? Since we're literally down to eleven people working?
I was debating that. Um, I am afraid of how, I'm still looking at thirty, forty percent of our registered voters coming out still, if they come out on election day. And to have them all line up six feet apart is still, I mean, they'd be outside down the street if we had lines.
Yeah, if we had one, yeah. Yes, uh, trustee Barbian?
Uh, you had mentioned that you have some departments that are willing to um have some people help out too. Uh, you have an idea of how many extra people we might be able to garner from some of the other departments or areas that are closed, like the library and things like that?
So I'm not sure how many exactly from the library. Um, we are still working that out. Um, and then I, again, it's based on my needs because it all depends on how many people keep dropping out, um, how many people are stepping up to work. Um, and then I know I've gotten a couple of people from the police department. Um, I have a few guys from DPW that are willing to work. So I, I do have some people from the um departments that aren't, I don't want to say working, but that aren't um out there.
We, we will make sure that the three polling places are adequately staffed. We'll order administrative staff to go there or whoever you have to.
Um, if somebody has interest to doing that, um, when do you want them? When are you planning to do the trainings or a cutoff date? You'd like them to uh let you know?
So I am currently, I'm not able to hold trains because obviously I can't do the whole ten or more. So what I'm doing is I'm sending them um the video from WAC, which is the Wisconsin Election Commission. So I'm sending the video that they have suggested to send out for trainings, um, asking that they are watch, asking that they watch it. Um, but a lot of training is done on election day. You're shown what you do, um, you know, whether, you know, you're handling the poll book, you know, what you need to do. Um, all of my chiefs so far, except for one, have confirmed and are ready to go for election day. So they will be like my main um trainers on election day, showing people who don't know what to do, how to do it. Um, but I didn't, I haven't really decided on a cutoff date. I mean, I'm just desperately trying to get people and if they come and contact me Sunday night, I'm willing to take them still, so um, it's pretty much where I'm at right now with poll workers.
Very good, thank you.
What were the three locations? You said Highland View, the safety center and the high school, did you say?
No, and Canterbury. I don't want to use the high school because of the way, where we're located in the high school. It's like right in the lobby area and it's a really awkward flow.
Cause Canterbury, there's a lot of work being done there, right?
Very good. Melanie, thank you, yes, cause, Kent, uh, you're, you're on mute.
Uh, thank you. Hey Melanie, um, just quick question, how is the in-person uh absentee val- voting going?
So we've had six-hundred and thirty-four of them come into the office um between this week and or like Thursday and Friday of last week. Um, Monday was extremely, the first Monday was extremely busy. Um, but it's, it's been a constant flow of people. Um, you know, we, you'd get a line of six people and then there'd be a little lull. You'll get another line of six people, there'll be a little lull. Um, it's a constant, you know, steady pace of people coming in.
Has any thought been given to um having the absentee, in-person absentee ballot on Saturday and Sunday? Or just Saturday? Maybe take the pressure off the in-person voting uh next, on Tuesday? Just a thought.
I have not thought about that. Um, I'm not sure if at this point I can change that. I know my notice has been published, you know, like from month, our dates are set and our times are set. Um, I didn't expect this election to be obviously so, such a high turnout in absentee and everything, so I definitely would look into that for something for November. But it, with everything being published and noticed that way, I'm not sure. Plus, I wouldn't have the staff to handle that on Saturday.
Any other uh ques- Melanie, thank you very much for um really uh getting this all together. Just really threw you into a, a double whammy being new and uh doing uh this all and this coming. So appreciate all you're doing. Any other questions for Melanie? Uh, well, thank you very much again.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we're moving on to the next item, is that correct, I hope? Think I was here before, item number D, B O T twenty-twenty-eight. Uh, discuss the necessary action to determine the village's essential function during the governor's safe at home order.
Thank you, I'll handle this one. Included in the packet was a memo, uh, I'm not gonna go through the whole memo, but it included two sections uh of the governor's safer at, at home order, listing essentially infrastructure and essential governmental functions. It also determines that each governmental body shall determine its essential function, if any, and identifying employees and contractors necessary to perform the performance of those functions. So then I listed on the second page of the memo, important to point out that most of the village's services can be provided in alternate ways that do not require face-to-face contact. You know, most of the ser- uh, the major server, sorry, say even the, the um, for the manager's office, obviously I'm taking calls. I receive mail, email. So I kind of listed the status here, you know, the village board operating, no face-to-face uh service that, like we're doing here. Clerk's office face-to-face only for elections. Treasurer's office, no face-to-face service. Downtown buildings, the welcome center and the host tower closed. Police and fire operating with additional protective measures. Municipal courts canceled till the end of April. Building inspector operating with limited face-to-face service. Uh, libraries operating um with no face-to-face service. The health department's operating, uh, limited face-to-face service. And then the rest, like DPW is operating uh with no face-to-face service. You know, the, the guys are essentially in their vehicles, separated, they don't eat together. Uh, police don't do roll call in the morn- morning. Um, parking wreck, we have to close all playground equipment. Uh, staff is strongly recommending that you maintain our current um operations status for the protection of, of our employees' health and uh well-being. Our recommendation is uh that um uh mostly made to approve the essential governmental functions for the village of Green Hill as included in B O T twenty-twenty-eight. Attached to this memo is also uh the actual order from the governor.
God, a question, uh, and I'm sure on all of our minds, uh, one of the questions we have is um the uh yard, the garbage yard. So my question out there to um certainly understand, uh, and I've, if I'm understanding, many of the communities have closed their yard or uh really limited down. So I know we're all getting calls on the yard. And uh my question out there is a little discussion on um, is that something, uh, Todd, that you would be open to discuss? To maybe having a minimum, minimum uh access to the uh yard waste area on the, on the yard? Is this something you uh would talk about?
Well, we're not recommending it. Obviously, if the board wants to do it, you know, we'll make it work one, one way or another. You know, really, if you look at it, I, I was incorrect in that uh memo that I sent to the board earlier today. Um, Milwaukee and West Dallas, their, their yards are closed also. So if you look countywide, it, it's probably less, uh, you know, not knowing Milwaukee's numbers and West Alice is how they dwarf everybody else is, you know, there's maybe ten percent of the dumps in Milwaukee. Ten percent of the residents in the, in the whole county have access to a dump right now.
Is there, it's another, then the question would be, is there um some other way? What, what actually is happening, as you probably know, is um people are doing yard work and um putting it out on the curb and there it sits or, um, so any suggestions and any other trustees?
But, I'll do just last, last thing and then I'll let, let everybody else. Um, the one thing we have talked about, if this does go long-term, meaning um a few more weeks, let's call it, that we would do curbside pickup, uh, make a route, run around the town, uh, do that. That way we don't have face-to-face, we don't have to have to have our, uh, attendant in the yard, making sure propane tanks don't get thrown in with the garbage compactor, you know, things like that. Um, that's something we think would, would really work. I'll be honest, and, and we all know it, the yard is a social place.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you, from what I've seen here at village hall during absentee voting, there's not much um, a great number of the people that have been in here are in the classic people who are very susceptible to this virus and shouldn't really be here, they should be using the mail. Uh, we've also had, you know, people spend, I, we had a guy today spend over a half hour, forty-five minutes in the building, looking at the notices, reading the boards, y- you know, the, just because we're open, you, you, what we're doing by making us open is we're one of the few places that are open, so they all come, come in for something to do. Uh, that's one concern, I mean, are we, are you really? Is this a vital service or is it because people need something to do because they're doing their yards and then they want to dump it off at the um, the, the DPW yard?
But just, Todd, I would be all for um doing curbside pickup if we could do that. Then we don't have to even bother the yard, but uh go ahead, uh trustee Olet, please.
Yes, I mean, like everyone else, we're all getting complaints about it. I would definitely be for the curbside pickup and I mean, I would like to start that now if we could or else let the yard open maybe two days a week. Or um if they don't want to do that, the curbside pickup would be perfect.
Trustee Barbian?
I also think curbside pickup should be looked at strongly. Um, it would solve the problem. People wouldn't have to go over to the uh Refuge Service Center by themselves and we could use it in the same rotation as we did for leaf collections in the wall. So that would, people would kind of know where it's coming.
Can I ask, are people dumping things by the gate or anything?
Um, not, not that I'm aware of.
I've not heard any reports of it.
Oh, good.
No, I went by there a day before yesterday and there was, I was surprised, over the weekend, there was nothing.
We did have one gentleman follow a DPW truck in the wrong way into the yard after he saw it was closed. I talked to him, because I've known him, I've had past dealings with him. He said he's dumping. I told him, I'm gonna call the police and I called police and he got cited.
Other comments on this, yes, right? Jason?
The curbside pickup is a good idea, but the cost on that just makes no sense to me. They're just gonna drive around every day, just going through all the neighborhoods? I'd rather, and I, I would just say this, I'll volunteer and check IDs and help people myself. And you don't have to pay me anything to sit there one morning from eight to twelve, so people can dump.
I would do it too.
Next door website, brought sixty complaints just on that, plus the emails, plus phone calls. Like, people are really going crazy about this because everyone's stuck at home and they have nowhere to go with their yard waste, they have nowhere to go with cleaning out their houses, nowhere to go with them if they're moving houses to different houses, um.
Even if we'd be open on Saturday, I would volunteer.
I don't think it's about volunteering, it's just really, to me, um, we're going against uh ordinance that the governor put out and we just gotta decide we're gonna break it a little bit or we're gonna not abide by it, or we are, so I'm.
But I didn't, I didn't see anything in it that said they were, um, that we had to close the yards.
Well, it, it, the question is, is it essential?
A lot of people think it is.
Because it's a Taj Mahal, I, but I'm, I'm for it, I'm for it, don't get me wrong. Any other comments on this, is there any um?
The only other thing I'd like to say is I would discourage against cutting the hours down. If we open it, open it. Because if you cut the hours down, you're just gonna increase the amount of people that are there on that day. You know what I mean? Instead of having a, a small stream, we'd have hundreds there.
Hello?
Hey, this is Matt, my name.
Yeah, Matt, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know about the amount of uh overtime it would uh cause, but if we did just curbside pickup on the regular garbage days and we would take bigger items and yard waste, um, I believe we have an additional truck that we're not using, that's the old truck. Uh, maybe we could add two guys, pull them off something else and have them go around and assist with the route. And uh at this point, college kids may be home already because colleges are all closed and maybe we could hire some summer help early.
Todd, is that a, is that a reality, uh, to do it that way rather than open the yard up? Garbage day?
We can try, but I don't know if we'll be able to keep up, keep up with it to match the exact day.
Okay.
You know, we, we could tell them to put it out that day and it's kind of like what we do at the leaves. Some days we're ahead, some days we're behind.
And I, I would agree with you, Matt, that that might be more um wise financially, just to have uh, and see if we get a, two people on it, a driver and a, a college kid just to go around and initially tell people we're gonna do it on their garbage day, so.
And definitely, we've heard that, I have heard in some of the teleconferences I've been on with other municipalities, they're having great luck finding uh seasoned employees right now because of all the colleges and kids being home.
They're having luck or no luck?
Good luck.
Oh, they are.
Kids are looking for jobs.
Trustee Chadwick, please.
Um, my, my feeling is, um, as long as there is no contact with our employees, I don't have a problem. So if you want to do curbside. I don't have a problem. So if you want to do curbside, you want to hire younger students who are often to do things like that, that's fine. I I'm totally against opening up the yard and having an interaction between our citizens and our employees. Our employees go down, the citizens are going to be upset anyway because the because of the lack of getting there or having the staff to handle it. So to me, it's a vicious little cycle. So let's not even go down this route. Let's protect our employees. Our citizens should understand what's going on. That this is a highly unusual. This is not normal, and this is something that we are all slowly working our way through and trying to solve. The one thing we do know is contact with other people is bad. Okay, so to expose our employees, I think, is bad. If you can work around it and do this curbside stuff and stuff, that's fine. I I'd go for that. I have a question for Ken. Ken, I am not comfortable having you do your inspections and stuff. I realize there's a point where some of the citizens have already been doing remodeling and in in order for them to continue and to finish up. I understand you have to be there. But I I would hope that you are not taking on anything new or protecting yourself because I don't think it's a good idea for you to be going into our citizens' homes. What exactly are you doing to protect yourself from that?
Ken, you're on mute. You're on mute. You're on mute. There you go. Ken still can't hear you. Your mute is off, but maybe your sound isn't on. Your volume up? Can't hear you at all. You're on, you're back on mute. Now it's off. But we don't hear you. There you go. Want to come back?
Working on a phone. How can you hear me?
There you go. Now we hear you.
Okay, when I go into residence homes, I I started wearing a mask. And I wear gloves. Most of the residence homes I'm doing are ones that are kitchen and bathrooms where they need to have the kitchen and the bathroom. I mean, they can't cook out and go out to eat anywhere. The other ones are commercial projects. We got five commercial projects going on in the village. Forests schools and Martin Luther Project, so those we're doing, I'm doing some hells corners, but the same thing, I'm limiting contact. We're not doing furnaces, air conditioners and all that stuff. So I do wear gloves and now I wear a mask.
All right. All right, very good, Ken. Thank you. Any other questions on this? I I too am kind of, Jason, go ahead.
I guess going back to the trash, is it possible then that the recycling guys can come on every week instead of every other week? Because that's one of the other things I've been hearing is a lot of people will take their additional recycling into the yard and now that they can't do that, the recycling is overflowing.
Todd, you're on mute.
Yeah, we can look at it. I'm just not sure. We're down two DPW employees right now. One's ill, one quit. So, you know, we've been doing a lot of planning for continuity of, you know, business, business, and I'm just reluctant to say we can add more at this point. I mean, we'll we'll talk about it and.
Todd, I guess what I'm hearing is the abundance of the trustees want to have some kind of pickup or yards. I would personally like you to discuss with Rod. I'd like it to be Rod's decision. It's his group. And I'd like them to be in on the conversation with you on which way they want to go or whether they want to do it at all. So I I'd recommend with the board that we go that way. Ron, go ahead.
I would like to say that considering the circumstances going on, it's just me speaking. I certainly give permission if you want to staff up the college students or the summer help far earlier, like, you know, next week, I'm fine with that. I think that we're gonna need them for many things. And, you know, again, I'm speaking only for myself, but we normally don't for another month or so get them in, yet I believe they're all home right now. I mean, I doubt they're in college. I think almost all colleges are closed.
Do you want us to discuss with Rod?
Is Rod here? You talk to him?
Rod was supposed to be.
I don't see.
I'm here.
Oh, Rod, yeah, there you go.
What's your opinion?
Yeah, well, we currently have four applicants for the seasonals right now. So with the village manager's permission, we could get ahold of them sooner and see when they can start. The village manager and I have discussed the situation as far as doing a scheduled yard waste pickup, much like the leaf collection. It would be on your recycling day and we would go around and basically collect it, much like we do leaves. We would ask them to put it curbside and, you know, we would try to use as much of the equipment as we possibly can not to handle it and just be most efficient as possible when picking it up. So it's something that I can discuss with the village manager and we can iron out the kinks and figure something out.
That'd be so awesome, Rod.
Yeah.
And Jason, and you can go, sorry. We would do that. We would plan it to start after the election.
Good, that would be.
Because we're gonna have some of the DPW guys helping with the election more than likely.
Jason, any other question on?
Correct. And Rod, is doing the recyclables every week, is that possibly something that's possible also then?
It would be depending on if we got some more, depending on when we got the seasonals, it could be an option. The truck itself, I'm not sure if it could possibly hold a complete day of recycling every day. Obviously, with people being home and not going out there, we have seen an influx in trash and recycling. The garbage trucks are having to get ran halfway through the day and then finish the day with an empty truck. So it it might be a little bit of overtime as far as doing recycling every single day. But I I all I can say is that right now we have seen an increase in both. So it would all depend on staff and if we can get seasonals in quicker than, you know, the beginning portion of May.
And then can I just want to ask the last question? As far as the yard, is it, and I'm just asking this as a question or a possibility. Is there a possibility that there's a sign out front that literally says, show your ID? Do not open your window. You will not get any help when you go up to dump the stuff? Is something like that a possibility? So that's the way there's the reaction?
We we had that sign up for the Saturday before we ended up closing the yard. I had two employees working, one IDing and one assisting, you know, working the controls. I came down for about forty-five minutes and watched it. And with surrounding municipalities being closed, we saw a lot of people showing their ID from the passenger side, obviously employees not wanting to take their masks off and get in the discussion with the with the residents. Let them through. There are also people that come down here and they just don't know where to go with things. So they are asking questions and the guys were taking their masks off to answer those questions. And, you know, as as this continues, the employees are getting a little bit more concerned about the contact with residents and who or who may not have it. Like Sue said, somebody that seems fine today could be very sick tomorrow. So you know, as this goes on, the employees are getting more and more worried and you know, even that little bit of interaction is putting some of the employees on edge. You know, that's all I can say. I mean, we did try it and I I wouldn't.
I'm all for Rod being at your decision on which way you go. I think either or would work, but I think if you did curbside, that would help some of our elderly people who can't get to the yard. Certainly to get some of the stuff out and do that. So but I'd like to have you talk with Todd if you have all the trustees are in for these two making a decision and letting us know.
Sure, sure. I mean, I'm all for that.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
What's that?
Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, let's make a motion.
I move that the director of DPW and the village manager look into hiring possibly seasonal people to start collecting recycling and or garbage on a more regular basis.
Yard waste, yeah.
And answer the other essential functions? Would they be as in the memo? We've got to determine all the essential functions, so.
We're gonna make this an essential function, Sally? Do you agree?
I say, is that if you want, yeah, essential function?
Yeah, so.
As part of.
As included in the memo?
As included in the memo of BOT twenty dash twenty-eight.
And then with the exception of what you said before about the curbside pickups increasing.
Right.
Yard waste and and.
I would agree with that second.
I have a question.
Yes, Ron?
In looking down the list here, maybe it's in front of me and I don't see it, but we don't talk about the village hall. Is village hall going to be maybe with the only one person, but is it gonna stay open after election? Or is the village hall itself gonna close? I don't see it listed here.
You're on mute.
I don't know of a from, I've had a lot of conference calls with the managers, with the mayors and village presidents, and we did the survey. I'm not aware of a village hall that's completely open. The only ones I'm aware of are some are doing by appointment only. You know, there's there's not much really that you have to do face-to-face with us.
Couple of residents that are due to pay their second portion of the tax bills in April, I believe. And how would they go about it? But unless we push back that date. But let's say they still owe a percentage and normally they would come into the village hall to pay it. What would be their options?
Either put it in mail or use the drop box outside village hall.
So there would be somebody here every day to check the drop box?
We will staff village hall fully as long as we have healthy employees. You know, you kind of can never say never here.
I'm just wondering because I get questions and the other trustees will, as that date draws closer. I mean, if somebody is processing the payment on the day it's dropped off or whatever, they don't have to have face-to-face necessarily, but it's just sitting in the drop box for.
Trusty Chadwick, one minute. I think this question just pushes back to why we have Todd Michaels as the manager. I think this is his area to make a decision again and let us know where the his his employees are gonna be. Trustee Chadwick?
I was gonna say that with that report that Todd I went through and I wrote down my own little sheet about it. And there is in the senior municipality that has any of their public buildings open. When I was asked as well from citizens about the village hall being open, I said, put it in an envelope and stick it in the mail, in the mailbox outside, not mailbox, but our receptacle outside. I said, that's one of the main reasons we have it. Death will be checking that and they will take care of it. And that's what I've been telling people. You do not need to have the village hall open.
Trustee Olet?
I I do agree with that. I don't want to put our our staff at risk. But one question I have been getting repeatedly is if we were going to like waive late fees on water bills? And could we possibly extend that next installment for the taxes by a month or two? Like a lot of the banks are doing that now. Can we do that? Would that be something we would have to do as a board or who would decide that?
Legally, right now, I know there's talk of possibly allowing us to extend the due date for property taxes. But that's controlled controlled by the state.
Okay.
The governor, I believe the governor's order has already taken away penalties on utility bills.
Oh, okay.
So can I speak to that? Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Kristen, hi. Right, so they suspended that rule on for the Public Service Commission on that it's our choice if we would delay penalties on water bills. Keeping in mind, we don't even have one going out until the end of April. And then that would be due the twentieth of May. So we don't have anything that is due really soon at this point. And we don't have penalties that go on every month. So as far as that, we don't really need to think about it till May twentieth or so. Then additionally, just to confirm what Todd said. So right now, the board, our board doesn't have the authority, no one has the authority to change what those dates are. One of the finance directors of another community has written something up and some of the legislators have taken that up. They just don't know when it may be heard. So for right now, it's illegal for us. Can you hear me? I'm sorry, Donna, did you hear me? Right, now I'm talking about the April, the installment that's due in April. So if that goes through, then that would be something that would be considered. I I've had received one telephone call on that so far. We'll see. It's nothing that we can legally change right now. But if they if they go and vote to allow it to come down to the municipality.
So Kristen, you would suggest that if we get calls on this, we tell them or have them call you guys or shall we say stand by?
On the tax issue? Referring to the state on the tax issue.
Okay.
So who assisted it? Is it the state legislators?
State legislators and the governor.
Okay.
Yeah, it's up to the governor. That's a good place to put the the blame.
Well, just so we knew, I didn't know who did that.
Any other questions on this? All right, do we have any pending vote on this or are we good?
No, you have a motion on the second on the floor.
Okay. We'll take a vote on approval.
Trustee South?
Yes.
Trustee Guns?
Yes.
Trustee Chadwick?
Aye.
President Birmingham?
Aye.
Trustee Barbian? Trustee Olet?
Yes.
Trustee Sivorowski?
All right, very good. With that, all right, with that, we are gonna move on to item number six, which means we are going to close session, guys. The board shall convene into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five LE to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public property to invest in public funds or conduct other public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Typically, to discuss requests from the fire union on mending the contract regarding grievances. I'll take a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Decided.
When we will not go back into open session, guys. We're not gonna vote on this tonight. So we're not going to close up. But that, we'll take a roll call for approval.
Trustee Guns?
Aye.
Trustee Chadwick?
Aye.
President Birmingham?
Aye.
Trustee Barbian?
Aye.
Trustee Olet?
Aye.
Trustee Sivorowski? Trustee South?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.